I'll call the order, the City of Elsworth Plating Board Meeting for November 5th, 2025. Board introduction, please.
Lisa Larue, Planning Board Member.
Vince Messer, Planning Board Member.
John Delio, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
Mike Haney, Member.
Assistant Payton.
Matt Utia, Alternate.
Staff introductions.
Brittany Merrill, City Planner.
Andrew Lutterlow, Deputy Code Officer.
Daniel Giff, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement Officer.
Thomas Cannon, Fire Inspector.
Okay.
There's so many of you.
I know.
We're getting fully staffed again, it's nice.
Yeah, I don't want to be outvoted, though.
Okay, one, I gotta add, we have minutes for the meeting of October 1st, so we've got to add that to the agenda, so I make a motion to add acceptance of the, to vote on acceptance of meetings for October 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so acceptance of the minutes. Any additions, deletions, comments, questions?
This is the new, the new way we're doing it, huh? Pretty cool.
Yeah, looks good.
Isn't that cool?
Yeah.
It's about time that we got some organization in the planning department.
I told you on the back, like, more people in the office. And I'll give credit, so Daniel.
Just take it.
I just, just one question, on going through that, where you, you have the tenant, the board members, staff, and then throughout the whole thing, you have using initials. Would it make sense to, up in the top where the peoples are, you, okay, after my name, J.D., just, uh?
Yes.
Because after a while, it's like, okay.
That's a really good point, I thought about it when I was putting it through, and then just got distracted by something all shiny, so I'll make sure the next one has that. Thank you.
But no, looks good.
Motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of October 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? You voting, Vince?
Complete with abbreviations for people.
Vince is not voting, so you can vote on this one.
Okay. I'm a yes.
Vince is not voting.
Okay.
Well, I, just only to be clear, I was absent from the meeting, so I'm proving the minutes doesn't seem to make much sense, to me, for me.
Okay, item number two, final plan review of a major use site development entitled Elsworth Tractor and Equipment for applicant owner Michael Saucier proposes to construct a commercial tractor and power equipment sales and service facility. The subject property is approximately 10-acre lot located at 500 High Street, Tax Map 11, Lot 7, in the Commercial Zoning District. Someone here representing Mr. The applicant.
Matt Williams, the Messer Group.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Saucier's here.
Yeah.
If I remember. Okay.
Yeah, so this came last month, and there were some changes requested by the board to the plan, to address some of those, so with the dumpster, rather than just speaking with the applicant as how, like, logistically moving the dumpster would actually work, they have the equipment on site, so like, if they need to move it temporarily for like, a truck to get in, or something like that, like, it's not like, really gonna need the dumpster somewhere long-term, so then, after they move it for that quick temporary, you know, adjustment for a truck, the darkened space that's on the plan now is where the dumpster will always end up, and so like, yeah, it may move for like, a couple of minutes while a truck comes in, or something like that, but the dumpster will always be returned, and truck staff will be trained to return the dumpster, the equipment they have to that flat square there, which is behind the privacy fence that they were made. We were discussing about some of the snow melt, the runoff from that. Part of the project has erosion control anyway, and working with the D on those processes, but a bark mulch burn will be used for that during the construction, and that filters and cleans runoff water, and that Baltimore burn will remain for the life of the project, as a way to help clean water and catch debris that might be in the runoff from the snow pile, from getting into the wetlands, so that'll be around the project during construction as well. Again, it will remain for the life of the project in addition to the more detailed infrastructure that's on the plan as well. And then, for the insurance of parking, you know, I've updated the application, and, you know, they're gonna have seven employees, and they may grow at some point in the future, but for the foreseeable future, and like, in multiple years, we're gonna cap it at seven employees, so that would provide 14 parking spaces needed. Again, like, they're, again, 10 years, 20 years from now, the business is still there, maybe they will hire more people, but for the foreseeable future, it'll be six to seven employees working at this location. And so that was what the parking adjustment was. Now, the applicant did still leave the parking, the optional parking deferment, if they decided to add extra spaces, but they would be using the grass pavers there that are impervious to provide that extra parking space in the future if needed, that would increase the impervious area of the development. And also, in the application, I had the more detail queuing narrative, we had discussed it at the last meeting, but I just put it into writing, and put it into the application. And then, there was also, sorry, the fire, we did receive a fire letter, I apologize, I did not get it into the application in time, but I've spoken with the fire department, they, and they approve of the project, and Thomas can comment on that more if you'd like, but we do have a fire letter from the fire department. And then, the, I think the last thing was, we did label sales and service on the floor plan, that's on the site plan, too. So, sales is in the front of this building, that's where, you know, customers walk in, talk to employees, get help, and that sort of thing, and the service, like, with the garage bay doors, is all in the back of the building, where tractors are assembled and worked on. I believe that was there.
Okay. I don't know if you're, if he was gonna, I don't know, yeah, nothing, okay. Any questions?
Just a couple little ones. On, it looks like it's on page 27 of something, there was a, there's a gra, a picture there with some, the location of signalized intersection and the limit of intersection influence. And I was just wondering how you defined, or, yeah, how did you define the influence zone of that intersection?
This was in conversations with DOT, where they had wanted, so trying to determine where the driveway entrance to the property would be, and so, based on discussion with DOT, that was kind of where they placed the zone of influence, and then why they wanted us to put.
Okay, so what, there wasn't a definition that was invoked, or something, okay, all right. Because I didn't know what that would have been, so now I know, okay. So basically, what they're saying is the end of that extended island?
Right.
Is the end of the, okay. Is there, in the driveway entrance permit paper from M.G.O.T., they talk about cut-in trees 20 feet back, 20 feet off the pavement to the south for 500, 500 feet to maximize site distance, and that's still all on the developer's property, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's totally under your control to do that.
So you can.
I thought so, but I just didn't put the one map with the words, and, fine. Did you want to say something?
I was gonna say, on the site plan, there's little hatch marks showing where the tree will have to be cut back.
Oh, okay.
Then another trimming will be done.
Are the dates for the driveway entrance permit stuff that you get from M.G.O.T., is there a, is there a, you know, used-by date or something, because most of these are from about a year ago or so, or six months, that they, you know, they say they're gonna start, and they hadn't started yet, and all that. Do these things need to be renewed or anything? Probably not, but I'm not sure.
I don't think so, I've never seen that, where, as long as the DOT know, they're pretty flexible with it, but we do have until, yeah, April of 2025 to get the work done.
Well, yeah.
Or it's already happened, sorry.
April 25th. By the way, it's fast already.
I believe it was 24 months on there, but I'm not.
Oh, right, that, that could be, but, okay.
Because of the way that was permitted, it was originally permitted as a woods entrance, and then a permanent entrance, so I just wanted, would want to be clear on some of those dates, but.
So it's not a case that the permit has expired?
It shouldn't have, no, I think when we looked at the dates, that we had a total window of.
Okay.
A total window of next year, again, we start getting that out of the construction.
On what appears to be page 33, you actually threw some trip generation stuff in there, but do you do anything with that?
Um, and kind of, I mean, just to illustrate for the board that, you know, the real accounts from the Topson store, what the, you know, potential expected traffic generation for this site is, and it's, you know, rather minimal, and then there's also just a comparison to what the IET, or ITE's best, like, use comparison is.
The narrative surrounding that is a little slim, but I get the idea.
Well, I think it could tie into what the queuing narrative suggests, which is that.
And I notice you put that in big print.
I did put that in big print.
So all people can read it. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Rather busy road itself, but in terms of, this use, the impact is minimal, but there's not really a ton that this developer.
Well, no, it's, I mean, it's a crappy left turn from Southbound 3 to into the site, but there's nothing you can do about it, other than be careful, and I know that you're trying to mitigate it with when things get delivered and all that, and it's certainly a lot less impactful than, say, for example, the Subaru dealer, which is right down the street, and way more turning in and out, and so forth, so.
And crossing the street between used cars and.
Well, there is that, yeah.
They get their mail a lot.
Let me see here, yeah, okay, so I, you addressed that, it's fine, and I don't know that there's anything you can do in the short term that would make it any better, I mean, sort of putting in another lane or something all the way down, and that's obviously not gonna happen anytime soon. So I'm, oh, there were some letters that you were requiring from, I don't know, Maine DNR, or whatever they are, did you get those?
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Are they in there?
They were actually acquired during the work with DEP, so there should be letters from Maine Natural Areas Program, the Distore Preservation Commission, and then the Land Fisheries and Wildlife are all in the packet.
Okay, so yeah, those are in there somewhere, because I, I'm sorry, I didn't have my whole packet with me, and my computer was misbehaving when I was trying to read it, so. That's it, I'm good.
So, I, so I have a question for staff on the waiver request. At the very bottom of the waiver request, it talks about parking lots to be surfaced with white-tumored asphalt, concrete, or other durable, dust-free materials, approved by the Planning Board or Code Enforcement, so which one is it, Planning Board or Code Enforcement?
That's up to us to decide.
If you want to determine that, or if you want to leave that in our hands?
I don't know, that's, that's a question I'm asking, I, you know.
It's your discretion.
Whether you approve it, or we approve it?
It's our discretion.
Our discretion.
It's our discretion, so if you want to make it administrative, then make it administrative.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you want it to be in our court?
On the spot, uh.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
That has to do with that additional future parking with the grass area, isn't one of the reasons why they didn't have the extra pavement was because they'd already met or exceed, they were at the limit of what their impervious materials per the, for the wetlands and for their stormwater and wastewater? So by adding more parking spaces, you would then be, not just making more parking spaces, like, just making extra, changing some of the site layout, but you would also be affecting some of the environmental, and that's a little more than just more parking spaces.
So they're gonna be using the pavers that have filtration system, and then basically the grass can grow up through it, and they, just like up here at Team Buddha, where it can be plowed, it can have rocks, it can be, the rain and everything else can go through it, that's what they're gonna do there, and potentially on the backside of the building, to allow for vehicles to park, so that way they don't go over the impervious.
It will remain pervious, this, this area up, just beyond the parking lot, is, is parking spaces, but it is pervious parking.
And what about, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can keep doing.
No, go on, sorry.
No, I was just curious if that's gonna be a standard, that we're gonna allow.
Well, they don't need those parking spots right now, they have what they need already for the project.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, if it becomes an administrative issue, that just in the future, they need it.
It would be in the future that the code office would have to handle, when a complaint would come in, that there was not enough parking spots, or there was cars spilling out on the road, the code enforcement office would have to go make a case, and then take them and say, hey, you don't have enough parking, how many employees do you have? It would be an investigation after that point, we can't hold up people with their projects just on what-ifs.
I'm not worried about the what-ifs for now, I mean, we'd be granting them the approval now for, for what they got on the paper.
Yeah, they don't even need that.
But what I'm saying is, if in the future, this project or any project, if we allow it to be just an administrative add-on to the project, it affects the overall site and could impact things like.
That we would have to make sure that they followed the steps of.
If that's.
I'm a little confused, but, I mean, I, I were discussing whether this should be paved or not, I mean, and I think in the past, and maybe it's, I think it's more commercial, I mean, residential, but I remember the three unit down on South Street, we had a big discussion about that, and there was a fire regulation that that had to be paved or those special blocks that.
That's correct.
So, sometimes it seems like it's a, a fire regulation that the road, the road, the treehouses, I think, I said, had to be paved, so I guess I'm a little confused on.
Well, they, they are paving most of their stuff up there, on the, the main drag is getting paved for the treehouses, their side, their side roads, where it's gonna be private is does not. But what this is, is basically, he's, they're just letting the board know that for the area set for any overflow parking for future uses, they're gonna use these pavers just as an informational, so that way that you guys are aware that it meets the standards for Chapter 4 for me, as well as for code.
So we're just talking about overflow parking, not the whole parking?
Correct.
Yeah, their parking lot is good to go.
Yeah.
Their parking lot's good to go.
Everything except for that rectangle is a normal asphalt.
Not even required right now.
Code can take care of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so the other half of my question to you is, does, does the statement, alternative materials may be allowed with special approval, does that need to be in there, and who does the special approving?
Code.
Okay.
Code and fire.
And fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems to me like a good way to make sure that it just, that, that it should be looked at from not just, oh, it's, it's nice, or it's not, it's not impervious, so it's a good thing, maybe have some control over that it's got to be acceptable to the fire department, it has to be acceptable to code enforcement, and that they would look at the extenuating circumstances of, is it impacting stormwater, is it impacting any other aspect of the site plan, that it's not just like, oh, it's, it's good enough, like, to have that buttoned down, the terminology.
That's good feedback, we appreciate that.
What about access around the rear of the building, is that?
We're good.
That, you're good, meaning that you can?
Yes.
In the same way, is it gonna be paved with the same?
Yes.
Pavers, or whatever?
Yeah, it'll be suitable to, to sustain a, the.
Truck back there.
Truck back there.
Okay, and you're good with that?
Yep.
The terminology is a drivable surface.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That's, that's NFPA 1, so this needs to be.
Learning experience for me.
This needs to be a drivable surface.
Okay.
Regardless of whether it's asphalt, concrete, these pavers, or, and we've had some other types of drivable surfaces where they've used a plastic mesh and filled it with rocks, okay, and it's worked fine, so.
And of course, they'd have to make sure that snow is cleared at all times for you guys, 24/7, 365, because that's where they plow.
Within, within, within reason, yes.
Yeah.
On that motion for the waiver, when do we get to that? I think we need somebody's name, because it says, insert engineer or firm name.
Oh, sorry.
You're gonna have to tell us who that may be. Any other questions?
Yeah, that's a, kind of a rookie here, I'm wondering about the display area, what's, what is the surface in the display area as it's illustrated, I don't see anything to explain what that is.
Any area up front here?
Yep.
Lawn, it's gonna be a lawn.
It's lawn, okay.
Yeah, it's.
And there's no.
Primary tractors, so they can park them on a lawn, or, you know, they don't need a particularly smooth surface.
And there's no concern, I assume, about, you know, oil, or gasoline, or anything else seeping into the area there?
If, if it is, they, they have bigger problems, because these are new tractors.
That's what I figured. That's why I said it that way.
Wire, wire up there, you had, um, last time we had talked about, and it's in the minutes, reminded me, I had asked the question of whether or not the lighting was gonna stay on after hours, and you said you were gonna find out exterior, all the exterior lighting.
Um, there, there has to be some lighting on 24/7 for security, just because these are expensive equipment, there's a lot of inventory that they'll have outside, so I imagine there will be some, some level of lighting on all night. Are the seven employees, those are employees that are there all the time, or is it, you know, four sometimes, and three another, but that's four plus three is seven, I just?
Yeah, typically, that's how, it would probably be two on all, or five in the job.
So, so the point is, the parking is presumably actually even more than generous in terms of the number of employees versus?
Correct.
Number of employees on site?
Correct.
So, okay, just.
Unless there's a sign up that says employee parking only.
Well, that's true.
It's more for my information, but on, on, on the stormwater section, page 21, and I see the driveway going in, it says, "The multiple culverts on another driveway were requested by U.S. Army Corps of Engineer," and that's the first time, I think, I've ever come across this.
This is, this is certainly more, more culverts than is needed for the stormwater.
And these are, I mean, these are three-foot culverts, right?
They are, these are culverts not so much for stormwater, but for little critters that are gonna migrate back and forth in those, because it's providing connectivity for the, the wetlands, because there's a wetland area here in front of the store, and a wetland area on the other side of the driveway, and so, this, I, I've never put in this many culverts in my life, but this is, provides a little area, and the culverts are, they're three feet round, but they have to be buried a foot in the ground, and then the inside of them are filled with gravel and substrate like that, so the little critters can scurry back and forth, and don't have to come up on the road and be squashed.
So it's basically kind of oval shape, just like.
No, it's a round culvert.
Is it actually round?
It's a round culvert, but the bottom foot is embedded in the ground.
I mean.
And frost never moves them.
I mean, I, I mean, it's like about 150-foot stretch from the first culvert to the fifth.
Yeah, they ask for them every 50 feet.
That's sort of, that's sort of the skunks that make up.
Yeah.
I don't quite understand it myself.
No.
You know, on solar farms, we're trying to provide for wildlife access and stuff.
It's the way it is.
We're gonna try to minimize that, but we just didn't have the ability to do that.
I mean, how big of a salam energy grown there, that you need a three-foot culvert?
It's what they requested, they followed.
Well, media, they're gonna, medium-sized critters, right? Yeah, so you might have, the average squirrel could go through there, you know, a fat raccoon could get through there. You know, if you had a, if you had a one-foot pipe, you could lose a raccoon in there and, you know, smelt.
And the reason for putting cover on the base of those culverts is to allow the animals to feel, quote-unquote, "at home."
Yes.
Traveling from one to the other.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I, I didn't make it up, I just.
I figured you had. Okay, any other questions? Anything from staff, before I open the, I open the public hearing, anybody here has a comment, question, and I'll close the public hearing, we have the, take up the, the motion to request a waiver from stormwater performance as the first. Do you have an engineer name that you want to stick in there, or?
Yeah, I can put in Jeffrey Allen, the engineer name, and the date is 9/11/25.
What was the date?
9/11/25.
Uh, do we need to read his whole waiver, or just reference?
I'm gonna read it.
Please read the whole thing.
Are you gonna read the whole thing?
I apologize, it was so long, but I wanted to cover everything, so.
Okay, I make a motion to grant the following waiver, move the planning board grant a waiver from the Stormwater Management Performance Standards outlined in Article 10 of the Unified Development Ordinance for the proposed development located, oh, at, don't see address.
Map 11, Lot 7.
At map 11, Lot 7, submitted by Michael Saucier, Elsworth Tractor. Waiver is a request, is requested to allow a minor increase in the post-development stormwater runoff volume and/or rate as detailed in the submitted stormwater management plan prepared by Jeffrey Allen dated 9/11/25. The applicant has demonstrated that the increase in runoff is minimal, will not adversely impact adjacent properties, public infrastructures, or natural resources. Two appropriate mitigation measures have incorporated to manage runoff, including.
Insert measures.
Insert, there's something to insert.
We have a subsurface, or a, this area right here at the bottom of the parking lot is an underground detention system?
Subsurface detention.
Subsurface detention system.
Including measures such as detention basins?
Detention systems.
Detention systems.
Yeah.
Subsurface, subsurface detention systems.
Yes.
Subsurface detention system, is that it?
That's it for there.
Okay. The waiver is consistent with the intent of the ordinance and will not compromise public health, safety, or welfare. A further move that the waiver be granted subject to the following conditions, continued compliance with all applicable, all other applicable provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance, implementation of all proposed stormwater mitigation measures prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, submission of as-built plans and a post-construction inspection report verifying compliance with approved stormwater controls. Staff is verified?
No, that's it.
No, no.
Not that, okay, is there a second?
Sure.
But is that gonna include the terminology that we said, that the, the non-paved additional parking would be approved?
Doesn't apply.
Doesn't have to be there now?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor of granting the waiver?
Do I want to do that now, I don't? I'm gonna, okay, so, make a motion that the final plan of the major use site development entitled Elsworth Tractor Equipment for applicant owner Michael Saucier be approved subject to the request for a waiver from the Stormwater Performance Area.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, all in favor? Is there a problem?
Go forth and save critters. Thank you, folks.
The things I've seen, I've seen fairly many critters in my career with sound.
Can imagine.
Open trenches overnight, that's a two-by-four, and then anything falls in the trench, it can crawl out.
You should, you're probably familiar with what they do out west for animals.
Yeah, we have torness species.
So what are they doing now?
That is the last, oh, that was last week, or last, last one, weren't you here today?
They didn't have the live one last year, flash muds.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah. You want to just say, help Molly? Like this, like, site here.
Can we continue, please? Thank you, gentlemen.
You can stay or go, if you'd like to stay. For the entertainment.
Get out while you can.
Staff comments?
I have some, yes, we just got back from.
Uh, we just got back from the annual NECA conference, so please bear with us. Um, it was a great opportunity to connect with planners across the state and the tri, you know, Vermont and New Hampshire, and learn some things planning-related, so we had a great trip. Daniel and I went down on Monday afternoon, and we just got back a few hours ago, so we're here.
And here you are.
Yes.
Whoa, a long day.
Long day, yes. And then we are still working on a training, a group training for our planning board, looking to have that in the January, February timeframe. We're still working on some details. We're trying to make it kind of tailored to us and, you know, painless, and hopefully, you know, provide snacks and all that fun stuff. And then I believe Matt has a brief update on where we are in the ordinance rewrite process.
Yep, so eventually, must the Mustang Group and Drummond Woodson have been working with city staff to update the city's ordinances comprehensively, so not just the UDO, but going through all the city's ordinances and looking where there are inconsistencies, legal problems, or things that could be improved. And then, obviously, the UDO is a big part of that, so at some point, probably in the winter, we will kind of bring a presentation to you on some of the ideas we have for updates. So the process is way two-fold, or Aga Dixon from Drummond Woodson is really looking at process overall, in terms of, again, not just the UDO, but how the city uses its ordinances, and, you know, there's things in there that we find that, you know, even though I worked here, I had no idea about, like, code enforcement's technically in charge of every ordinance if it doesn't specifically say that somebody else is in charge of it. And like, just trying to tie some of those things up and create clarity. And as far as the UDO goes, and probably where you guys will have more of an input and interest, is looking at certain standards within the UDO, looking at the process, what works for you, what doesn't, where you think there can be clarity, or, again, like, where maybe it could be changes to like where now it's more prescriptive, but there could just be more performance standards, what you guys are comfortable with. You know, I could go through and list, like, you know, maybe the part, the shared parking, for example, is a large table with a bunch of complicated calculations that don't really come up that often, like, is it worth keeping those in the ordinance or just putting something more general in its place? So at some point, we'll be coming forward with those types of recommendations to discuss with you all and find out, again, what you're comfortable with, what you think will work, and then hear your feedback on things that we might not have brought up that you'd like to have a look at.
And I'm sure you, you gotta keep track of, a couple of questions, now again, bills that got passed by the legislature to do the planning. Because now, if I'm not mistaken, a four-unit apartment can be approved by code enforcement, if I read it correctly.
Yes, so it's administrative approval for three- or four-unit structures, only if they're the same structure, though. If it's three or four units on a lot, but they're separate, that still is a subdivision that comes to planning board.
And I think there were some changes to the accessory units, they've allowed more accessory units on a lot, there's-
Uh, not necessarily just accessory, they had increased just general number of units that have to be allowed by right on a lot, but for Elsworth, where density is already pretty, you, there will be some adjustments to the table of dimensional requirements in that regard, but it won't be so significant for the growth area zones that were impacted by that.
Now, with that included, because there were some minimal parking standards.
Yes, that will get updated, and I've worked with staff already, we'll have to talk to the planning department, because they missed the meeting, but we had a meeting with the code office and reviewed some updated parking standards. You know, one in particular is removing the downtown zoning provisions, getting rid of those three zones and creating more of a general parking requirement for the downtown, and then looking at that table, that provides minimum parking for the areas outside of the downtown zone, and still having minimum parking for those parts of the city, where downtown, there's really enough space to build larger parking areas, but, so it's less prescriptive, again, where it's not a specific number, but the applicant would still be responsible to show the board that they can provide parking for whatever their uses, and the board can determine whether or not their plan makes sense. And the state also provided new parking rules as well. This was one of the other bills that got passed, where parking agreements within a quarter mile, like, have to be allowed and that sort of thing.
And what's, what's the target deadline for having all this done?
Uh, it sounds, speaking with Robert yesterday, that June, by the end of this fiscal year, essentially, to have the project wrapped up in terms of recreating the new ordinance structure for the city, but then also the standards adjustments within the UDO.
The, the state legislature updates have to be in ordinances by June 30th of 2026 for municipalities that have city council structure. So that is, that's our targeted deadline.
That has to be done and approved by council by that date then?
Yes.
So the real, the real finish date is gonna be like April?
Yeah, that's what we're aiming for.
Okay.
Yeah, we're using June and backing into it for the process to make sure we don't miss that deadline.
Where would you hope, anticipate for us to start working on it? Because soon, the council's gonna be needy in budget, and to push this discussion past the budget season is cutting it awful close to getting it passed.
For this phase, we're really trying to focus on making sure we're compliant with the state legislature, so I'm hoping there shouldn't be a lot of discussion about it, because it's what the state is requiring of us. If it seems like there are things that we're including that's kind of beyond that scope that might be contentious, we might have to push that past the June deadline and incorporate it at a later date, but we want to make sure that we've got the state requirements in our ordinance by that June date. They're being very, yes, thank you for bringing that up. We're being very mindful.
So it might come in like two phases. Phase one, critical, must happen. Phase two, thoughts and ideas that could happen.
Yes.
Later.
That's gonna be a busy year.
Yeah, yes.
Anything else, Matt?
That was it? Just give your answer?
I guess I would ask, I think, Rob, to bring us up to speed on, there was an email that came to me from Judy Blood, who's a next-door neighbor of Elsworth LLC, or what's?
Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
Dustin Lawrence, commercial building up in the falls, and-
So, uh, the city issued an occupancy permit for that building last, was last week? Yeah, you were gone, so it was last week we issued the C O.
It was a month ago.
Well, no, we actually signed it last week. Scott signed it, anyway. Anyway, the C O was signed a week ago, roughly. I think it was the same day that it was, it was a coincidence, but the same day Dustin approached us about having a change of use for the building to allow him to have more, a more varied set of uses there, one of them being an auto body repair type shop and that sort of stuff. And I allowed them to go through with a minor site change to allow those uses and put up the butters notices, and that's where you got, you got the email from Judy. She heard with her concerns, she's talked to me about it. I think I've assuaged most of her concerns. I told her that every time someone goes to rent one of those units now, the, the person who's interested in renting it has to make sure that that is, that specific unit comes up to whatever code their use is gonna have to, is gonna require, so if they have to put extra additional firewalls in, if they have to have, you know, whatever it is.
But in-
More parking, they'd have to address more parking if that, because there's not much parking there, and that's-
I mean, approval, in my memory, I thought there was something in the approval, because we proved it based on a really limited traffic flow. And that, I think basically that increased that would have to come back to the board. How, I may be remembering that wrong, but I, I thought there was something in the approval that would require that.
I don't, I don't believe there was a condition like that, but I can go back and check to make sure, and at least, I still have three days before his minor site is up, I can always kick it to planning if there is-
Just for some reason.
If there is, if there is something in there for, as a condition, I don't, I don't recall one, and I, I looked briefly, but I don't recall it seeing it, but I don't, realistically, I don't know how you can, how you can say that we can really control the traffic flow that much after the fact. If he were to sell that building and someone wanted to change the use of it, I, I think if they put the parking in, they'd be able to do what they wanted to do. It's a- It's a simple change of use. Yeah, every, everything he, everything he asked for isn't allowed use in the zone, so it's-
So, if he's putting an auto body, I'll talk to you, um, being in allowed use, he's got some major changes he's got to do to that building.
So I've already addressed those with him in an email.
Especially an auto body, where he's not just talking about firewalls, he's also talking about explosion issues, especially he's gonna be doing painting, storage issues with flammables and combustibles, and you're probably looking at a substantial firewall from ceiling or from floor to roof deck. You know, and it may be more, depending on the building code and what his life safety code and/or the other fire codes indicate, so that's gonna be quite a work for you, quite workload for you.
Yeah, that, that's ultimately on him and us to make sure it gets done correctly.
So.
I mean, a change of use too, and it could affect, you know, the number of parking places.
Absolutely. Yeah, so they'd have to add parking.
And it's up to-
Every time it comes up, there's gonna be money on the line for him to fix this even further.
And it's up to him.
Again, kind of late in the season, and I'm still waiting for the two curb cuts to be shut off, which hasn't happened.
Not only that, the noise issue, because if he's doing that, he's gonna have air compressors. What's Judy Blood gonna say about an air compressor kicking off in her backyard?
It's in allowed use.
If it's-
It's in allowed use, but there's still, at least, the city does have a noise ordinance.
Well, that's what those three buffers were for.
And it's also for code to enforce, so.
We'll have to enforce it, you know, you, you can play the what-if game all night.
If, if he puts it in, how do you enforce it? Are you telling him he can't? And then if he can't, then he can't do the job that he wants to do.
If, if we get a substantial, if we get a substantive complaint, then you have to say, well, you're, you're-
Your violation.
Your violation of the noise ordinance, you have to figure out how to, it's on them to figure out how to fix it.
And this process is in place for that.
Just for the record, I just brought it, figured I'd bring it up.
Yeah, thank you.
So I have a question with, you had to notify the butters?
Yep.
And then they have 10 days to submit information to you.
And they, they have three days, I, I believe I did the math, they have three days left as of tonight to get in touch with me.
And then-
So far, I've only heard from Judy.
So there's, how many of butters were there?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Well, it's, it's 250-foot from the, from the-
So, but if you hear from people and other people have concerns or complaints, because, you know, they had the public hearing that was allowed everybody to consider it online, in person, whatever, and then this change of use, even though it's permitted use, it does change the general atmosphere of the site, which was approved originally, so then if you have a couple more complaints, then you have the option to bring it back to the board.
Yes, so the, I, I, as, as the administrator of that, I have the ability for, at my discretion, to kick it back to planning, so if I do find out that I, I made an error and that there's something about changing the parking or the trip generation-
Or if it's specifically said that was the only permitted use on that particular spot.
Yeah, so if I, if I missed a condition in that, I, I can kick it back to the board. If we got a, if we got a number of complaints or some, or a very significant complaint, something I didn't consider that I missed in my, in my consideration for the minor site, then I could have the board readdress the situation.
Well, that becomes expensive for the applicant.
Absolutely, that, that, and that's the whole point of the minor site.
Right, so maybe it would be a good idea in that case to, to, because nobody's memory's that great, and of course, I wasn't here then, he doesn't remember every detail, just go back and read the entire approval and make sure there isn't some other little-
Yeah.
Something.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I looked at it at the time, but I, I may have meant something.
Has the applicant been, has he been, this information been discussed with him?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw him today.
What's that?
I saw him today.
Okay.
I, I discussed it with him last week before I issued the C O.
Okay.
So it sounds like, until we find a reason to put it back to planning board, their administrative stops in place to address things that are coming up.
Is one more thing, on the checklist, I'd like that it's all typed out in the columns with notes and details and references to different sections in the ordinance, so we can find it easily. Whoever was responsible for that, great job.
Must have been Brittany.
I think it was Matt's checklist, because it was definitely-
Oh, it was Matt.
If it's typed out and very easy to find the appropriate section in the ordinance. Thank you.
No doubt.
No problem. Anything else?
Just adding here.
Any other?
You got your work cut out for you.
Any other comments from the staff?
What about the marijuana ordinance?
Yeah, you better not to ask.
Still in review.
Yeah.
Better not to ask?
Still in review, that is the, the official answer right now.
And the cast of characters is gonna change, so that's gonna be fun. Cool, you guys have fun.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Well, we have to acknowledge-
Oh, yes.
Planning bites.
Yes.
Excellent.
Because planning doesn't bite. I thought that was really cool. It complete with references to J.J.
Does anyone have an answer to the, the quiz question?
No. No answer.
It's a true or false question.
Can we adjourn first?
Yes.
Can we adjourn first?
I second the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.